Sure, it's nine o'clock.
Not according to our fancy new clock.
I'm on Apple time.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order for the preliminary budget hearing for the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County. Let's see, roll call, please.
This is a special meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 24th day of July 2024. In attendance are Chair Holly Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Pace, Second Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Ruthie Schlebaugh, County Administrator Steve Howard, and Department and Management and Budget Director Erin Dorrin.
Thank you. Take it away.
Good morning. We have a preliminary budget hearing. Before we start the slideshow, I just wanted to thank, obviously, Management and Budget, all of the county staff who are involved. It is a long process, and it takes a lot of work. And obviously, we couldn't do it without the Board or Administration. It takes everyone to put this together. Just like in previous years, part of the budget that you will not see today are roll forward POs. So those are for projects that are started during the year, they're budgeted for, but they are not finished by the end of the year. So that comes to you separately as a list of purchase orders that need to be rolled into the next year for fiscal year '25. You will see some grant funds budgeted in here, like ARPA and CARES, because they are large. However, most grants are adopted by the Board when we get them, their budgets are adopted, and then we re-adopt them every year. We do have cash carry forward, and those are for projects that are budgeted. However, they don't anticipate they will be able to start them or issue a purchase order to be rolled prior to the end of the year. So that funding also needs to get moved into the next year so they can complete that project. Some of that information is on page 685, and it's approximately $19 million. So the next slide goes over our millage rates. Our guidance from the Board was not to increase millage for this budget. So as you can see, all of the millage rates are exactly the same as last year. On page three of the budget book, you'll see that the overall budget increase at this time is 2.79%. And the general fund budget increase is 6.73%. The next slide looks at taxable value. So this year, taxable value increased 10.11%. The next slide looks at this year's average residential property tax. So...
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask a question? If you go back to the taxable value history and the 10.11, is that a combination of new growth, the bump in the 3% Save Your Home, and any change in ownership where you changed valuation?
Yes, that's everything. That is the total, the total increase in taxable value.
Do we know how much of that is just the 3% bump?
I do not know offhand. We can try and get that for you.
Thank you.
This slide looks at this year's residential property tax. So with an average assessed value of $169,873, and then removing the exemptions if you're homesteaded, county taxes would total $1,984.44. If you lived in Crystal River, they have an extra $789.97. Inverness totals an additional $932.14. The school, obviously, does their own millage, and then the other includes mosquito control and the Southwest Florida Water Management District. This slide goes over the total summary budget in different categories. This is also on page six. So it just kind of breaks down, you know, general fund is the largest portion at 33.8%. Enterprise funds, 24.5%. And then you'll see there's transportation funds, the Health Department, debt service funds, library services, impact fees. Just so you can kind of visually see how that works out as far as the budget goes. The next slide looks at total budget, operating, and reserves. So that is our total budget, the $475 million. You can see the green is the operating budget, and the yellow is the total of reserves. And like I said, that is everyone's budget, so all of the departments included. The next slide looks at just the general fund. So you'll see up at the top in the blue, those are reserves at $24.2 million. And then the operating budget is $136 million.
Commissioner Schlebaugh.
So the 105.9 is, when you say everyone, could you tell me who everyone is?
That's everyone in the budget. That's every department, enterprise funds, everyone that you see in that budget, that is what it adds up to. So that'll be utilities, that'll be the landfill that will include building, that is everyone that's in there.
Thank you.
The next slide looks at general fund expenditure types. So you'll see the constitutional officers at 36.49%, state mandates at 19.55%. We then have debt service, we have transfers, we have our reserves, the $24 million. Payroll is 10.43% at $16.7 million. And then operating and capital is 9.13% or $14.6 million. The next slide breaks down the constitutional officers, so you can see the various offices, their totals, and what percentage they make up of those funds. The next few slides will talk about the constitutional officers' budgets. The first one is a supervisor of elections. You can see that her budget this year went down. And that budget from last year included expenses related to the presidential election, so that is part of the decrease for her fiscal year '24-'25 budget. It does include an additional position. And then you can see reserves, the Board had given us guidance years ago that any additional funding was to be left in her fund to account for those ups and downs through election years. The next slide is for the clerk's office, and the clerk does have a, the clerk's office does have a presentation that they're going to provide. This just goes over their budget from last year to this year. Overall, it was a 1.9% increase. It does include some one-time purchases for an IT risk assessment, an update to the accounts payable system on hardware replacement and server replacement. For this year, '24-'25 budget, their request did eliminate the health insurance subsidy for non-Board-funded employees. So I believe Ms. Phillips is here.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm not going to take up much of your time this morning, because as you can see, the clerk's budget came in well under what our normal request is of, we usually try to stay around the 3%. We were able to get it to 1.87. A large part of that is because we were able to shift those 13 employees that we were requesting in the past for the Board to supplement their health insurance. We were able to shift those back over into official records, into that operational revenue. That equated to around $124,000, which is why our request is, is what it is so low. And I mostly just wanted to come and ask if you had any questions for our office, and to thank you for your support.
Board, do you have any questions, comments? No?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for your partnership.
Thank you.
This slide is for judicial services. And just so you're aware, judicial services includes funding from both general fund ad valorem as well as special revenue funding. Their budget request for ad valorem would total $539,798. The next slide is for the property appraisers' office. This was the information we originally received from the property appraiser. They did send us an email last week saying they had reduced their budget. So that will be updated in the September budget book. So now their budget for '24-'25 will come in at 2.69% based on the information they sent us. So we are very excited for them. The next slide is for the sheriff's office. It has their budget from last year, the information we received from this year, from the guidance of the Board for the 10 additional positions. This budget does not include the school resource officers, which is funded from the public safety budget, so it's not included in this. And then the law enforcement impact fee budget also includes funding for the 10 new positions. So there's $1.309 million in this budget under operating for the sheriff. There is another $667,790 in law enforcement impact fees, also budgeted for those positions. The next slide is the agency budgets. So these are community agencies, county planning, Division of Forestry, the Health Department, the Medical Examiner, mental health, which is Livestream, and funding for Whispering Pines Park.
And that includes the building the new morgue in that budget?
Yes, that's actually in the CIP.
Yeah, this is in the CIP, so I assumed it was in that total.
Yes. The next one is Board budget. This is staffing changes. This does not include positions that were added mid-year. There were some positions for building, I believe some other departments that came to you since the last budget. However, these are the positions that were either added or taken away that are reflected in this budget. We've broken them out between those that would be supported by ad valorem and those that are for charges for services or enterprise funds. The next slide is for administration. Up in the top right-hand corner, you'll see there's two different tiles. One is ad valorem, and those are the departments that are funded by ad valorem, which is the Board of County Commissioners, Communication Services, County Administration, and the County Attorney. And then the next tile is special revenue funded, which is business license, which we also know as economic development, utility regulation, and visitor and convention bureau. Just so you're aware, the only thing currently budgeted for utility regulation is just the reserves. There are no actual expenditures budgeted for this year based on prior Board direction. For tourism, just so you know, the special projects total $2.6 million, and that's on page 124. We have Communication Services added a position mid-year as part of the communication plan. And Administration also added a position mid-year as part of the communication plan. So when you're looking at the totals, you can see ad valorem supported went up slightly at 1.5%. And then the special revenue funds, which is mostly tourism, 16%. The next slide breaks that down into the various categories, so you can see how it works out between personnel services, operating expenses, special projects, internal services, which are transfers, and then reserve balance forward. The next one is for community services. They have three different funding sources. They have ad valorem supported, which is their administration, community centers, ground maintenance, housing services, parks and rec, support service, and veteran services. Those went down slightly, 1.4%, and that has to do with parks CIP projects this year going into '25 compared to last year or current year fiscal year '24. Special revenue funds are for animal services, boating improvement, drug court, library impact fees, park impact fees, and teen court. And you can see that one up slightly, 5%. And then the special taxing district, which is library services, went up 7.3%. The next slide looks at community services, again, broken down into the various categories of personnel services, operating, capital, debt service, their transfers, and then reserve balance forward. Public safety is next. They have special taxing district for fire rescue, fire CIP, and the fire training center. That went down slightly, and that is also due to the CIP going down slightly. Special revenue funds, fire impact fees, fire vehicle trust, and the opioid settlement funds that we're receiving, that went up 26.4%. We did receive a $700,000 increase in opioid settlement funds, so that is a large portion of that. Enterprise funds EMS and the EMS vehicle trust. And you can see that budget has also gone up about 14.8%. The next slide, you'll see it broken down, as you can see, personnel services are a large portion of that. And we wanted to point out that both fire and EMS personnel are considered special risks. So their retirement contribution is 32.79% and is roughly $4.4 million of that $20 million, just so you all are aware. The next is growth management. They do have some ad valorem departments, administration, code compliance, and land development. You can see it went up slightly, 7.4%. This does include a new position for code compliance and administrative assistant, too. Then there are enterprise funds, which is building, building vehicle trust, and building technology. You can see that went up as well. And the next slide, again, looks at the categories, so you can see the personnel service as well as the reserve balance forward. And we wanted to make you aware that that reserve, the building reserve for operating itself is $3.3 million. For their building vehicle account, they have about $900,000 in reserves. And for building technology, they have about $2.9 million in reserves. And they are looking to fund replacement software with that. The next slide is public works, probably the longest one. They have four different funding sources. Ad valorem includes administration, aquatics, aviation, which we did want to point out that that has been divided now amongst two different funds, one for Crystal River Airport and one for the Inverness Airport as directed by the Board. We have facilities management, road maintenance, and technical services. Also for road maintenance, they are receiving three new positions, so that is also part of that increase. I believe that totaled somewhere around $600,000. So you will see for ad valorem that it did go up about 11.4%. For enterprise funds, that is related to the landfill, so you have solid waste management, hazardous waste, you have litter control, long-term care.
Commissioner Kennard.
Erin, did I hear you correctly? You said that there were three new maintenance workers that were in this year's budget?
For road, yes.
And the budget for that was $600,000?
I believe it's a, it might be slightly less than that, but I think with all of their benefits, and I think they need vehicles and some other things.
It seems to me that should be separated out if there, you know, if there are initial startup costs. Otherwise, we're, we're looking at $200,000 per position for three positions. That seems a bit excessive in the budgeting for it.
So we can go back and ask them exactly what they need and pull that cost out and separate it for you between their payroll and, per se, their vehicle and those types of items.
Yeah, I understand. There's, there's going to be, you know, salary, benefits, your, your legacy costs. All of that stuff needs to be accounted for, but even at that, I don't know how we get to $200,000 per position.
Okay, we will go back and we will get a detailed breakout for you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pace.
So we've budgeted for three maintenance. I mean, I know we have in the budget for our public works director as a licensed engineer. Have we not looked at bringing on another engineer in that department as well and budgeted for it? Because with all the anticipated growth and all the projects that we have out there, we're just falling further behind.
Yeah, we had one actually currently that we tried to recruit for an engineer. The challenging part is actually getting engineers nation, nationally is, is challenging. So I know staff was working close with the public works director previous one, and as we got the acting one now. But we're looking at all those opportunities, but, but, you know, trying to recruit is challenging. We've been fortunate to have another engineer come on board recently, which is good. I'm very interested in possibly reorg at some point. I'll bring that to the Board at some point, which I think could change it a little bit more. So for now, I feel pretty comfortable with where we're at, other than it is challenging getting engineers. I mean, that's the biggest, no matter if we could budget 10 of them, we couldn't get 10 of them. It's almost like law enforcement and public safety. It's difficult to be able to hire folks right now nationally. It's tough, but we are looking at all those, yes.
We have one engineer now, and you're looking to hire a second?
Well, we have two, we have currently two engineers on staff for the county. But obviously, we'd love to have a third one with this public works. But we also have an engineering position potentially with this construction management, what I call vertical. But we actually had to kind of take that away a little bit because it was challenging getting engineers. It's just, it's not just in this county, it's across the nation. It's just very difficult. Folks aren't going into that field, unfortunately.
But in public works, we have one right now?
Well, we have an acting right now. Acting, Ken Cheek is acting as a county engineer. But obviously, we're recruiting, we're hopeful that there's some talent out there that's interested in this county. But it's tough and it's challenging nationally.
Who's the second engineer?
Corey, which just, he was a former engineer for the city of Inverness, came on board. So we have two.
So that's the new one?
Yeah, so actually, they're helping.
And he's in public works, though?
He's not, he's in utilities.
Okay.
But they're acting.
That's what I was trying to get to.
I'm able to use the, those resources when we can. But there may be some other, you know, I'm even interested in looking at other contracts and stuff like that because we have continuing contracts that we can pull from as well. But again, this is a national crisis for engineers. It's not just here, it's across the nation. So trying to, you know, recruit and things like that, we've been successful in the past. But you also got to get the right fit for this county, and that's, that's yet another challenge when you're doing these things. So, but I'm very interested in looking at that. We've talked with staff, but these are the things that are priorities right now that they indicated that they wanted to have in this budget. But I am very interested in the public works position. Is there some other opportunities? We can do some things. I've got thoughts on that. I just want to see my talent pulled right now because I don't know. Every, every time we put something back out, you never know, just like we just hired Economic Development Director. This is because he was a tourist. I mean, we got that talent that you would have never thought you'd be able to pull from there. So you never know when you go out, who's out there. So we'll bring that back as soon as I can if I, if we think we can find other engineers, but we're looking at it.
Thank you.
So for the enterprise fund, there's also solid waste CIP and the solid waste vehicle trust. You will see that there is a large decrease for the enterprise funds. They have started their project to do the landfill expansion. So that is what that decrease is due to, they're using that funding. Internal service funds are fleet management, fleet vehicle trust, and general government vehicle trust. Again, if you look at that, it looks like it, well, it did go down. But they were purchasing vehicles, and I think they were kind of backlogged with it was taking so long to get our vehicles. So going into fiscal year '25, not as many vehicles need to be purchased. And then for special revenue, we have the Beverly Hills MSBU, the Citrus Springs MSBU, gas tax, road impact fees, and stormwater. That does have a large increase, and that is due to the residential rotor surface increase. Just so you're aware, that is budgeted in this budget for fiscal year '25 for $16.2 million. And that did not take any funding from the general fund. Public works expenditures, you'll see a lot as capital outlay. Like we said, 16.2 is for road resurfacing. We have five and a half million for the landfill expansion, citizen service area, and the scale house improvements. There's also $3.7 million for stormwater improvements. Water Resources um had an increase. And obviously, these are all utilities, water conservation, um wastewater and water connection fees, uh renewal and replacement, and the Utilities Vehicle Trust. Um This includes about a three million dollar increase just in operating reserves. Um The Board did approve previously um the use of ARPA funds for uh a few utilities projects. So um that did help them with their, their budget. So if you look at the next slide, you'll see they do have um reserve balance forward of twenty-five million. Um That's not just operating, that is across all of their uh departments. So their Vehicle Trust, their water connection fees, their wastewater connection fees, and all of that. The next slide talks about um Administration Support.
Commissioner Schleppel.
Erin, on the previous page, the reserve balance um just for the Publix edification, that can, that reserve can only be used in that department?
Oh, yes, yes. We cannot touch Utilities reserves. Um Administration Support includes uh GIS or Geographic Information Systems, uh Systems Management, Management and Budget, and Human Resources. Um That is all Ad Valorem supported. Uh There was a ten percent increase. There was a new Help Desk Technician uh for Systems Management uh for GIS. There was a GIS Specialist One approved. And for Management and Budget, uh we switched uh a grant position for a Purchasing Assistant. So the next slide, you'll see the majority um of that funding is for Personnel Services. Obviously, we're not doing projects or any of those types of things. Uh The next slide talks about Non-Operating Budget. So um you have Admin Services, you have our CIP, um Detention Services. We have Economic Development, which is um that CARES funding. We have General Fund CIP, um which is really uh the, the Duke Funding. We have uh Public Safety, which includes the School Resource Officer Program and Juvenile Justice. And we have our Reserves and Transfers, we have the Tax Collector, and then we have ARPA Funds. Obviously, we have been using ARPA Funds as well as the Care Funds um and Duke Funds. The next slide uh continues for Non-Operating Budgets. Um We have Debt Service Funds, uh just so you're aware, one of them, the two thousand and four Bonds for CCRC and the VA Purchase um will retire next year, so we will start seeing a savings there. Um We have the various Street Lighting District Budgets, um Special Assessments. Um And the big change in that, and it might change back, is uh the local provider participation programs that the hospitals participate in. We won't receive the final total for that um until August. They've emailed us. Um But that is a pass-through. The hospitals pay it, it's sent to us, and we forward it on to the state. Um The Insurance Trust Fund, that's our insurance, um the county has. Miscellaneous Special Revenues, um this year, we did budget um for the Federal Forfeiture Fund. We had not budgeted it previously, but there were some funds received this year for that. Um So we did start budgeting for that, and then miscellaneous impact fees. So this includes the school impact fees, the impact fees for Crystal River and Inverness, the law enforcement impact fees, EMS, and public buildings. Um The next slide um is just really the millage discussion, and we have some information for you um for consideration. So um just so you're aware, obviously, there was no millage increase. Um However, um reserves are at eighteen point four-three percent, or approximately sixty-seven days um of operating. The Transportation Millage, again, did not increase. Um However, the budget did cover the entire sixteen point two million for the road resurfacing. Um The EMS Subsidy was reduced slightly by about eighty-five thousand dollars um to the two point five million. And then we have on there the General Fund CIP, also known as the Duke Funds. Uh We don't budget those, so there's two million dollars um in that fund for, you know, the projects that the Board wants to consider.
Commissioner Finnegan.
The reserve is budgeted at eighteen point four-three percent. Um Aren't we capped at seventeen percent by our own code?
So our policy is seventeen percent. So the rest of that, that's in there, that was funding that there was no, currently, there's no expenditure for. I have some other things on here that we will need to use it for, so I don't know what it will come in at, at the very end. Like I said, Livestream has not sent us their official document as to what they're gonna charge us, so we just put in what it was for last year. And then Juvenile Justice sent us a letter this week, I'm sorry, la, at the end of last week, saying they need another three hundred thousand dollars. So um there are still some expenses that we have that we don't know how much they're going to be. But yes, our policy is that seventeen percent.
So you just have that in there for because we're only preliminary, and it will be down to seventeen percent? So in essence, if people ask for zero more dollars, we would just reduce the millage and return that to the taxpayers?
You could, yes.
Thank you.
Um Some other information we wanted to provide you.
Erin, the um, the Duke, we had um uh I guess tagged that. I don't, I don't know if we had actually named it or not, a Special Projects Fund. Uh That says, you've got on here, two million dollars available there. Is any of that money earmarked? We've talked about, over the past few years, we've talked about a number of projects. And I, I know that we had uh earmarked some of those Special Projects Funds. Uh Are, are those projects included in that two million?
Yeah. So there are some, like for the trail, that are in there. Um And we can get you a breakdown of all of the projects that are, that have actually been put in there. And some of them have been completed, like their, last year, you all approved for stretchers and stair chairs. Um So the funding was used out of that. I know they just cut the PO, um or they're getting ready to for those road improvements, about nine hundred and fifty thousand more that were also approved during the budget last year.
Right.
But I can get you a printout of everything that's remaining in there to be used. I do know off the top of my head, the trail funding um is in there, and I think there's a few other projects that are sitting in there as well, so it'll be carried forward.
Okay, I guess this, this two million that you had, that says available, that's available because that two million is not earmarked for anything?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um Like I was saying, the Juvenile Justice, we received a letter from them that they need um approximately additional three hundred thousand dollars, and it looks like that is due to additional juvenile days. Um So we looked at that letter. Um The Courthouse Second Floor Project, um I know that was discussed here previously when we did um the CIP. And then in discussions with um Public Works, it was determined that a million dollars would not be enough. They're thinking it's somewhere between two and a half and three million dollars. So we put three million dollars into that project. Obviously, if they get a better estimate, I don't know how close they are to that. Um That number could potentially be reduced. Um But that was the best information we had at this time. So that is what we have um for consideration for the Board. Again, this is the proposed millage. Um And it is the same millage that we had, or the same millage rates as last year. Um The next slide has the millage rates, so for General Fund, it would be six point nine nine five one. Transportation would be point nine eight six zero. The Health Department would be point zero five six four. Library Services, point three one four seven, and then Fire Rescue, point five seven eight zero, for a total of eight point nine three zero two.
Thank you. Ward, anything?
Governor Chair?
Yes.
Last year, uh, last year, I voted against the budget uh first, the first time uh since sitting on the Board. Uh First time since two thousand and sixteen. I said at that time that I was concerned about the large road resurfacing budget and our ability to uh to get that much asphalt down in a timely manner before we rolled into the next budget cycle. Um This budget includes another sixteen million. We've not um, we've not started repaving from the last year's sixteen million. And I'm told now that um, that Pave Right, the, the company that looks like is going to be doing the majority of this road resurfacing, and some areas of the road will be completely rebuilt, uh that they can do about ten million dollars a year in road resurfacing. Uh They haven't started yet, and so once they get started, if they're going to be putting down uh ten million dollars in asphalt over the course of the next year, that looks to me like next July, August, we're still gonna be sitting on sixteen million dollars and, and uh money's budgeted for this year. You follow me? I mean, we haven't used last year's money yet, and if they can only put down ten million dollars a year, I don't know why we budget another sixteen million, and we haven't started using last year's sixteen million yet. And from what I'm hearing, they're not even gonna be able to use the entire sixteen million dollars over the course of the next year.
Mr. Howard?
See if Carl could come forward. I think uh we've, we've actually, you know, had some discussions on that. Obviously, we're not sure about the, the, you know, that we, we have some pricing and things like that. Obviously, this county's been behind. There are other options. I think um we've been talked about um an additional bidding opportunity that may, you might be able to do that as, as well. Okay, Carl, Carl's not here, they said, so, but uh, but there was obviously a delay in, you know, getting these bids out. We've had discussions uh with Pave Right, um but I think there's other opportunities uh to spend this money potentially. Um And obviously, costs are going up, so there's definitely a lot of roads that we gotta get, we gotta get done. Um I told a story to somebody last week, if you get in your car here today in Citrus, you can drive to, all the way uh to Col, Denver, Colorado, with how many miles of road we have. So it's gonna take, I think, more than one company doing this, I think, to do this. So, but we can come back and give you more information, um and uh so uh staff can give you the, the position on this. But trying to get this thing going um was a delay, um but part of that was having new staff and things like that. Also, I think we're gonna be in a better position with new data coming out um with the Assessment Management, which is underway soon. Hopefully, you'll be approving that soon. So, but we can look at all that and bring any of that back to the Board.
All right, um I'll go ahead, I, I'm gonna support this today. But if we don't have a plan coming forward by the time it's time to approve our final budget, I am not gonna approve another dime for road resurfacing. That money's been sitting in the county coffers for a year now, and I know it's not this Board's fault. But when we went through this discussion last year, I had had a conversation with somebody in the industry, and they said, I'm telling you, you're not gonna be able to spend that money. I told this Board at that time, it's too much money, it's too big of a jump, we're not gonna be able to spend this money. Here we are a year later going, we haven't spent the money, and there's no plan yet to spend sixteen million. So before the final budget, there needs to be a plan. How are we gonna spend that money? How are we gonna get that asphalt on the ground and start repairing these roads? I'm not arguing that they need to be repaired, but we should not be collecting this much money from taxpayers and not repaving roads. I remember Commissioner Kitchen sitting up here. He would get absolutely livid that we would hold money or these companies not getting asphalt down on the ground. Somebody needs to put their foot in somebody's behind and start getting roads repaved.
I sense that Commissioner Kennard is a little frustrated, and I would share his frustration. We've got to get these roads going. Commissioner Finnegan.
It seems like um maybe a few months ago, when we were looking at this, didn't we bid on more than one contractor? Pave Right was in there, but I, I remember, wasn't there three that we were able to use? So eh what Commissioner Kennard's saying, we have one contractor? Shouldn't we have multiple contractors to do, looks like, thirty-two million dollars worth of work in a year?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was saying. I don't think that your current bid structure, um way it's structured, it doesn't allow that. I think you're gonna need a simultaneously additional contract um to do these types of roads, obviously. Um I think you've got, uh obviously, I want to get these roads paved as fast as I can get them done. I have a lot of frustration, too. Part of it was the way they did the bidding process, which was something they never did before. Um So we're all over it, and we'll bring this back to the Board, but uh I want to see it spent. Do you seem like there's been a track record of this before? It sounds like this happened before, where they weren't getting it done. So uh, you know, and I think there's been issues in the past. You want to try to keep it local, um so we're gonna try to do that as, as well. And that's why we've had some very candid conversations with the local vendor. In fact, what could you do? And I think they're telling us maybe about ten million, um but I think there's other companies that can do some volume as well, but we can bring this back and get this plan to you.
I'm a little confused because a couple of Board meetings ago, I had asked about it, when, maybe when the bid was, why, we're not moving forward. And we were told at that time, oh, because if we wait and we get this whole list in the system, we are going to get to pave a lot more. We get a lot more bang for our buck. But now Commissioner Kennard's saying we're getting zero bang is, is actually what we're getting. And we're, how do we get more bang for our buck if we're, we're set up in a way that they can't even pave for the dollar amount that we have?
Well, you, you don't know until you ask. That's the other problem. I mean, I think you, uh, until you bid these things out, you don't know if this is verbally done or informally in, in writing. And sometimes you get vendors that say, in fact, they can do work they can't do. Um So that happens too, until you put it out, and we have a formal process. You have to solicit bids and things like that. We don't have the luxury of the private sector of just going out and picking companies we want to pick. Um That's a process in itself, to go through the process itself, evaluating and things like that. The contract they have in place does do multiple things. There's separate applications, and I think one of the pieces they are gonna actually give to another company, is my understanding. But the majority of this would stay local, so you'd look at that and see, in fact, what could you get done? And we've actually indicated that to Pave Right, that there's a lot of money at stake if they not able to do this. So we gotta figure this out quickly and swiftly, um and we will. We'll bring that back to the Board and let you make that decision. Uh But continuing to do nothing will continue to be where you're at today. Um And that's a result of what you have uh with all these roads, and you've got a lot of roads. I mean, you've got nineteen hundred miles of paved roads that you gotta maintain, and this, this is not easy to, to get there. And um like you said, I think there's a shortage uh nationally with a lot of things, so we'll bring this back to the Board and have a plan and, and let you make that decision.
Commissioner Pace.
Yesterday, we were given a list by Carl um on each district's road resurfacing program and dates. And some of the collector roads, uh you, you know, I think we're nearing an end where we're going to be uh qualified to receive SCOP dollars. And I don't know even if we bump some of those, like Apafka, I think Dunkland's already under contract, maybe Gospel Island. Some of these roads are in horrible condition, and they're not set till twenty-six and twenty-seven. And I don't know if there's an opportunity that even if we qualify for SCOP, that we get those dollars, but maybe we prepay upfront and get those done. This is not going to get any cheaper. Every time we turn around, we hear how much uh the cost is escalating for repaving or rebuilding a road. So I, I, I mean, I'm gonna support this, and I, you know, I, I think we do need a plan, and we do need to start executing this plan. But I am not in favor of taking any money out of road resurfacing. We are so far behind the eight ball, and even if we have to rechange our language, and I don't know, because I think this has kind of been sequestered into residential road resurfacing. If we, even if we put the money aside, we need match dollars desperately for some capacity issues, and we just don't have it. And so I, I don't know how we need to work that in the budget, but I do not think that we need to be taking anything out of transportation. We are so woefully behind the eight ball just with everything that needs to be done. And, and I don't know if we need to recategorize residential road resurfacing, if we can't keep up with the program and the funding, but taking funds away from it. keep up with the program and the funding, but taking funds away from it is not the answer, in my opinion.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Two things. Because Commissioner Kennard said it's no fault of this board, it will be, and the residents won't see it that way. So, my question to you is, you said you'll bring it back timeframe? So, when people ask us, "Well, when are you gonna hear? When, when will you have answers?"
Well, we're, we have work authorizations they've already issued to date, so those are ongoing now. We can come back, and again, I think there's another option with ensuring that you have other bidders, too. I think that's another option. We have talked with staff about that as well, so I would think next board meeting, we'll be more than happy to make a presentation and, and give you that data and kinda show you where we're at with the road projects and as well as some of these other comments that you had as well.
And the second thing is actually to Commissioner Baze, because it's your district. You had asked a board meeting or so ago about South Apopka, and I think I had said, "Oh, I believe that's 2025." When I looked, it's not. I, is it '26 now? But I'm telling you, I know people out there, and last year, or maybe it was the beginning of this year, it's changed, is what I'm telling you, and I don't know why, because I checked for some people. I'm like, "Oh, it's ready, just hang on another year, 2025." So, to your point, I'm not sure why things have gotten pushed, but that is one of those roads that sorely needs resurfaced, and that's on the list. So, just letting you know it was pushed, and I don't know why, so I don't know if you wanna check in on that, but...
Well, that was the list we received yesterday.
Yeah. And that's all from me.
You're done?
Well, I do wanna make another, another final comment. You know, we look at Ozello Road. I mean, there's grant funding, but grants take matches, and that's a resiliency issue. So, again, I, I'm gonna stick to my mantra here. I just do not think that we need to be taking anything out of transportation, road funding. I don't know if we have to reclassify how we're going to use it, if we can't keep up on the residential road resurfacing, but transportation is one of those that we just have not funded over the years. You know, we shut it down from 2008 and just, you know, kept Band-Aids going, and now it's time, and, and we're paying for past sins, because there's some of these roads that are literally going to have to be rebuilt. They're not resurfacing, you're gonna rebuild them, so...
And I think also, I think when you get, for, once and for all, when you get the real assessment done, which this county's never done in the history of existence, you're gonna get some real, real data that's probably gonna shock you, 'cause there's a lot of F-bombs are gonna come out of that probably, which I, I talk about a lot, 'cause you're actually gonna now see the condition of these roads that no one even knows. I mean, I tell the story across the county, and sometimes I do pop quizzes, and very few people know how many miles of road you have, so...
When's the timeframe for that?
It's currently, it's the CCNA Consultant Negotiation and Competitive Act. It's underway, so they have a finalist now. So, once that contract goes to the board, I don't know if we're anticipating when that completes, probably September, maybe.
I don't know where they are as far as the negotiation, the department, but we can ask them where they are with that.
This is a process of following the CCNA guidelines, but they actually have selected a finalist, which they complete negotiations and comes through approval, and they'll crisscross the counties and laser light all those kinda data that you're actually gonna have once and for all to actually see the condition of these roads that you currently, one person's doing this by observation, which you can't do. I mean, that's not the way to do business, and all the surrounding counties are starting to actually do this as well. And that's the other thing you have, you're competing with other counties, too, obviously, across the state for paving and things like that. So, it is definitely difficult, but I think, like you said, this isn't going away. You've gotta, you've gotta take care of this issue, and we'll bring it back.
I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but this is really important to me. If you took central Flor, the region of central Florida and the southeast region, out of the 23 million people that are in Florida, that's 16 million people. So, we are sitting in the apex of where the major population is in the state. Second to that, the central and the central northwest portion of the state is the area of the state that is going to grow. It's the last place that there's enough electrical grid for any kind of major industrial, commercial development that's going to take place. We're seeing it in Ocala. You have vacant land all through Levy County and going up that north, northwest Gulf Board. All the predictions, I mean, I sat on numerous calls. All that growth is funneled into this area, and we're still seeing the effects of the Suncoast Parkway coming through our county. Now's not the time to take our foot off the gas. And I wanna make the point that in 2013, 2012, the Board of County Commissioners laid off over 250 people. They've never replaced all those employees. I've worked on, I've been at this board in 2010 to 2014, and now, and I'm telling you, we have put together a great team, but we're just at the beginning of that team. It takes a while. I'm frustrated. I wish this, we talked about this a year ago, getting a company in here to make road assessments, and we're just now finishing up the bidding process. But again, we've had massive turnover, reconstructing our team, finding quality employees, and it's taken almost two years to do that. And I wanna tell our team members that I'm very proud of them, I'm proud of the work that they're doing, but it's time to put the foot on the gas, and we've got to go in all of this stuff. I mean, we, we've, whatever it means that we have to do, we've gotta get it done, we've gotta get it over the finish line. We, we've waited long enough.
For edification of the public, would you please tell everyone what you said to me when we talked about what the delay was on the LIDAR? That it is, I believe it's a request for quote, which has, which is a capabilities...
Yeah, it's unfortunate. It's a CCNA Consultant Competitive Negotiation Act, which is a process in itself that delays and takes time. Obviously, we had to get, even funding for it, which we didn't get funding for that until a few months back. So, it wasn't even funded items. We can't do anything without having funding. So, once we got the funding, we began that process, then you have to build a bid, bid package, which that takes time.
But the process is two steps. First is that we review qualifications of all the applicants.
You can't talk about pricing.
Can't talk about pricing, and then the second round, you negotiate with the top.
Yeah. It's a process in itself to do that, so, and the board supported the funding a few months back to do that, but it's a process in itself to do that, so, but we're excited about doing that. And I'm, I wanna put the pedal all the way to the metal, all the way down, I like that, and get things to the finish line, and we're gonna continue to work as hard as we can. Unfortunately, government is challenging. It's not efficient. We say that a lot. I like efficiency, and the processes take time, unfortunately, you know, to do that. But we're gonna do anything we can to keep it moving forward and get, get into the end zone.
By the way, well said, Commissioner Baze. Does anyone have anything? No? Okay. So, you've discussed the millage rates, so I will open it to the public. It's a little bit different. Set up a motion first. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Are you speaking officially for five minutes or...
Yes, ma'am, for five minutes. My name is Mark Zavesky. I live in North, in Beverly Hill, excuse me, in Pine Ridge on North Wagon Point, and I'm here to represent the 11,000 residents of Pine Ridge Estates. I have a letter on file, so five minutes. My hope today was to walk away with a good news story that I can share with our board of directors and our residents that does three things. Number one, it keeps residential road resurfacing on a pace for 20-year cycle, starting in fiscal '24. Second, that ensures any funding for resurfacing not used in '24 rolls forward into '25. And Aaron, I think you covered that already. And third, that it honors the commitment to start resurfacing Pine Ridge Roads based on the list that you provided to us when you came out and visited. Based on the dialogue that's here, I'm a little bit mixed at how I'm gonna craft that story. There are some realities that we're all facing. I don't mean to tear at any scabs if I do that. I apologize in advance. At the same time, I think it's good that you hear how some of the public is thinking, and I think the comments from the board reflects that. The first item has to do with the 20-year recycling, resurfacing cycle. It's specific to residential roads. That's our concern right now, because that's where most of our stuff is. Based on the county's data, we have the worst roads in Citrus County. Therefore, we were elated last year when you guys elected four to one at the final budget meeting to put us on a 20-year cycle. Unfortunately, we don't see a mention of that 20-year cycle anywhere in the budget materials. We think something that important should be reflected in the budget, in the, in the road maintenance section, maybe, in the description, in the objective, something along those lines. In a similar way, it's different to see the increase in funding that puts us on that cycle. When we look at the materials, it looks much more akin to the, the two mils per year for five years than putting us on that, that 20-year cycle. So, what we're requesting is clarification. Does the budget for residential road resurfacing put us on that 20-year cycle or not? So, that's a clarification item that we're requesting. Second item that is difficult to follow is what happens to any unused funds that aren't executed '24. I think Aaron's comments address that question, and any unused comments are gonna roll forward into '25 and beyond and beyond, and we would be very concerned if money is taken away from that, a view from the public. A little over a year ago, you came to visit our board of directors, and we really appreciated that visit. We talked about a lot of items that were of, of significant import to our community, and at that time, you gave us a list of roads that were to be repaved in fiscal '24. You gave us that list. It had 13 road segments and about four and a half miles of roads that were gonna be repaved. We're well into the fourth quarter of this fiscal year. That frustration that you feel, understand that the public feels as well. And so, again, we're asking for clarification on this specific point in the list of road segments to be repaved in '24. Is it still valid or not? Unfortunately, we're told that list is a little outdated, so we're seeking that clarification from the board here. In summary, we're requesting clarification on, on those three items. First, does the budget put us on that 20-year cycle for residential road resurfacing? Put us there and keep us there on that cycle? Are the unused funds rolled forward? Aaron, I think addressed that, but again, clarification specific to the residential road resurfacing. And in the list of Pine Ridge Roads that you gave us, that that actually is going to be executed and in the fiscal '24 budget, so we don't get in any games of it as a '24 number, is it a '25 number? Trying to. Our intuition started by saying it was pretty easy. I think there's a little bit more stuff that we have to cross on that one, but we appreciate any feedback that we get from you on that one. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning, and thank you for the very hard work that you guys do on behalf of the citizens of Citrus County.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this topic?
Good morning. Janet Barrett from Citrus Springs. Roads is one of my passions, okay? Citrus Springs, they have bad roads in Pine Ridge. We have more bad roads than they do, because we have more miles of roads than they do. But I sympathize with Pine Ridge, because they do have, like we do, our roads that have been neglected and neglected need to be rebuilt, not just resurfaced and repaved, but rebuilt, which is going to cost a lot of money. Are we in a process of hiring possibly five different pavers, one for each district, so that the roads can actually get done? Which I think is not a bad idea, because, you know, it would keep the one going 24 hours a day, seven days a week, just, you know, to finish District Three. And, and, you know, like I said, we've got the most roads in District Three of the entire county, you know, county. So, my next question is, CCNA, you asked a question, and I listened to an answer, and I got no date, because they can't give us a date. Anytime we've asked for something, we're not getting answers, we're getting roundabouts. Well, they're working on it, it's coming soon, it's in the works, we have, work authorizations are going out. Well, if they're going out, why aren't we getting any back? And I've been hearing that, 'cause I've been bringing up roads since Rebecca, excuse me, since Commissioner Baze was here the first time as a commissioner, and she knows that. And we're in the same place we were when she was on her first term as a commissioner. And I can see her frustration, because she understands where I'm coming from, okay? You gotta keep the 16.2, just for the fact that this way, if you get to the 16.2 in July, you gotta have money to do August, September, you know, the rest of the year till we get to the October 1st. So, I agree. The proposal of the budget, I think you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll close, open to the public. Aaron. I believe you're reading the motion. Yes?
Can we get some clarification on the roads? I mean, that's what...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm... Yeah, you, go, go for it.
I wasn't gonna beat a dead horse, but I was told many months ago that there were three companies we were looking at, and now we're at one. Are we still looking at the three?
Well, I think there, there's multiple companies on that list, but they each are awarded certain applications. That's the issue. So, they have one, I don't have the bid in front of me to pull it up, but, so there's certain applications. One company would get others, would get others. That's your thing. I think what you're gonna have to have is another contract on top of this contract. You're gonna have to do that simultaneously, I think, to be able to do that. This current bid, from my quick review, and I'll have staff, I don't have it in front of me, look at it, the way I think it was done, I think it, it has some opportunity for the future with different applications that you're doing. It's a good tool probably to have, but I think you also need to be able to have multiple user bidders to be able to crisscross this county, if that's what you're gonna do, you're gonna need that. So, we're gonna need, we talked with staff about already having that maybe done by October, that's what we were looking at. So, you're gonna have two applications to be able to, to do that, but there actually, there's applications within that to do multiple types of road repairs. But, so there's more than one company you can utilize, but the lowest one gets that, those different applications. And in this case, it was Pave Right. Pave Right actually was the winner of this, and then you have to sit down, do work authorizations, they have to do estimates themselves, and then also have some candid conversations, what are their abilities and capabilities to do that? I can only take their word with staff, and they said they can, if they can say they can do 10 million, whatever that is, then you're gonna have to figure out a way, if you gotta spend the money, how do you use other companies as well? The big push here is always keep it local, keep it local. We're trying to do that as well, so we wanna be friendly to the locals as well, but we may need to do other types of applications, and I've talked with staff about that as well.
Well, I do wanna keep it local, but we also need to get two other companies, which I was told, not by you, but the director, that that was in the works, and we also talked about putting the category of specialty contractors, so that you would be able to bid and get some things done quicker than the process it is now.
Yeah, that, that's in there. So, that's in the agreement. So, there's Able, like I said, there's another company that they're gonna, I think, make an award to, which is a different application, but there's different applications within this award now. I think you're gonna need other, another additional procurement vehicle to allow you to do other things, so you could potentially have... So you could potentially have multiple companies in one category. If they can't do the workload, they can't do it, you try to find another company that can do the workload, you know, because it's going to cost you money. The delay costs you money, money, money.
And I would love to see five contractors, but we're having trouble getting the one. So I think we do need to branch out. There are companies in Tampa, they're, you know, around the area that we could, I don't, I was told that's what we were doing. And again, not by you, but, so we're on the 20-year cycle with the 16 million?
In our discussion with Public Works, that was the amount that they had listed in the CIP and we just pulled that up and looked at it and it said that it was on a 20-year cycle. We will get with Public Works and we will update the CIP verbiage and then ask them if they can write something for the budget book to put in there.
And the unused funds, they are rolling forward?
They are, yes.
Okay. So then, Madam Chair, I forgot the third question already that the Colonel had.
Can, oh, I wanted to ask, actually piggyback on you and get, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the term "application" correctly because there's several different meanings to that word. Are you talking about techniques for various?
Techniques and, you know, there's different, I call applications, different ways of, of the different areas within the, the roads. And one is just what I call this road resurfacing, there's other applications they can do. So in this bid, they did, could allow multiple bid awards, but it really goes to the lowest bidder in those categories. That's your, that's the issue, that you have multiple bidders, but only in one category. You've got to have flexibility to have multiple bidders in every category. If they can't do the work, they're not able to do, maybe it's only if it is 10 million. And if I got 16, I've got to spend the other 6 million. I've got to find a way to do that. I can't wait. So that's kind of, I think, the issue, the deficiency in this current contract, I think, looking at it. That's just my observation and that's why I directed staff. We have to have another additional procurement as well to be able to do that, to make sure in fact that we can carry that out with attempted.
Are you, did you think of your third question?
No, I forgot it.
But we can, we'll bring all this when we.
I'm personally, I've, I've always been hearing 20 to 25 years is best practices. And I think given all the moving targets of inflation and what the actual road condition is and everything else, then, you know, I'm more comfortable with 20 to 25. And if that's best practices, then I'm fine with that, but we do have to expedite. And as far as the local aspect goes, once we max out our Citrus County companies, we need to expand because we need it, we need it done. Commissioner Cannard.
Steve, the last comment you made about finding, finding a way to spend that additional 6 million in road resurfacing, I would fully support Commissioner Bays' thought on, or her comments on moving that money towards like a Gospel Island, one of our collector roads that ultimately, we would love to, to resurface that under SCOP. But given that that's now two years down the road, who knows if we'll even qualify for SCOP funding at that point? Let's do something and maybe get one of these collector roads taken care of, you know, that's, that's on the list, that's further down the list and really is in rough shape. So I'm not saying go do that, but certainly if you're looking at options, that's a great option she brought up.
We'll do it.
I also agree with Commissioner Bays too, especially match funds, you know, the residential road resurfacing and collector roads are absolutely the priority, but we have widening the rest of 491 breathing down our neck, other widenings that do require match funds. So at some point, you know, putting that money aside for match funds where FDOT is actually doing the actual paving, then that's also. But I agreed with everything that she said today in terms of we're behind the eight ball. And infrastructure has been put on the back burner for too long, so hopefully we'll have a little bit more clarification by the next budget meeting or maybe even the next general meeting.
May I?
Absolutely.
So I did have conversations with Eric yesterday, Landon. And since we're talking transportation, I asked to find out what the best method would be. Should we stay with transportation impact fees? Should we look at a mobility fee? And we don't know that answer. So I, I think that's something that we kind of need to dig into because with the growth that's coming, it's my understanding, sometimes mobility fees, you can ask the developer for a lot more under that development or under the mobility fee than you can get out the transportation impact fees. Again, we talked about this a long time ago. I had, had asked the board to consider doing a master corridor study. I still think that's a very important thing. I know it's going to cost us, but it costs you now or it costs you more later. And if we can do that master corridor study, we can then start to put that into our comp plan, which would then save us potentially the condemnation fees when we get ready to build these corridors, just like Rock Crusher Road. We've approved all this residential development. We know that that boulevard is going to have to be expanded out to 44. But if we don't put this into our master corridor study, then it's going to cost us in condemnation if we don't, if we don't start to sequester these lands. And I still think that's a very important thing that we should consider looking at and bringing it back.
Done?
Mm-hmm.
I agree. And Pine Ridge questions, is the list that I was given, that I presented to the board of Pine Ridge, is that list still valid or has it changed?
I'd have to look at that list. I want to say this, yeah, well, let's, we'll bring all that back and our goal is the next meeting, we'll get the list, we'll tell you where the work authorization is. I'm being told daily they're, they're signing these, so we'll make sure that's in fact happening. We'll come back with the discussions I just talked about with an additional contract, which I think we can expedite, but we'll get all this back to you and make sure these roads are current.
Also, a date when trucks would be rolling in Pine Ridge would be nice, or just rolling generally in the county would be great.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we've already asked for timelines from the local, you know, paving company, things like that, so we'll, we'll bring all that data back to you.
We have so many competing priorities in this county between economic development and everything else to set us up for the future, but I would say that roads and infrastructure is probably our absolute number one pressing concern, if you had to pick.
I want to see it done more than you do, believe me. I want to see it happen.
Okay. I think that was the question that you were trying to remember? Okay, yeah, I took notes. And then I totally forgot to respond to open to the public. My apologies. So now we're going to read the millage.
So this is the proposed millage rates for fiscal year 2425. The general fund is 6.9951. Transportation, .9860. Health Department, .0564. Library Services, .3147. And Fire Rescue, .5780.
Total millage? Okay, looking for a motion?
Motion to approve total millage of 8.9302 for tax year 2425.
With the detail as read in by Ms. Dohren.
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Bays.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schlebal. Any further board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we, upcoming meeting.
Oh, true.
Yes, what?
There's one more motion.
There's one more, I'm sorry. B, the motion to approve and authorize staff to execute the certification of taxable value, the DR420s, the maximum levy calculation preliminary disclosure, the DR420 MMPs, and tax increment adjustment worksheet, DR420 TIFs for fiscal year 2425 via electronic format, BE TRM.
That's why I give for taking my reading glasses off. Thank you. Looking for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebal, second by Commissioner Bays. Any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our next regular meeting will be August 6th here at 1:00 PM in this room and we are adjourned.